Let's see who's up ahead. Mr. Senter, you're up.
A pleasure to introduce to the public of the United States of America and State Revolving Fund, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'd like to welcome everyone to the June 6th meeting or June 1st meeting of the Morton County Council. We'll begin with the Walker grant and SRF approval. The Oprah grant for the $550,000 we submitted last week, our score is very good on that. And so, rewards will be announced on July 15th with written notification around August 1st. We did finalize our purchase of the grant. Up here by the water tower, I would tell you that Mr. Rowe, if you have a bill of duty, has 120 out of local hours, but he's not building. Hey, hey, Sharon, here's the file on the, we got $226 that we didn't have to spend. Shy of the 33. I have a bill, there's two bills to submit that, one of them is to put the land title escrow for the resurgence, and it's $250,000. I'm like a motion to pay that.
You can motion favor?
Say it. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, please say some, give that to Sharon. And then I have an invoice for $850,000 that I paid with a personal check on the surveying. The surveyor, we picked it up on flight 15 and had carried it to Bedford, Martinsville, Steakhouse, another place. Anyway, it was the same company that had done the previous stating, so they used those states, but I'm like a motion to reimburse me $850,000.
Motion to reimburse $850,000.
Okay, all those in favor say aye. Uh, next one, obviously. We do have, we got our SRF approvals, State Revolving Fund Home Program, pleased to announce it, preliminary in the United States of America, the town of Morton County approved. So, our SRF has been approved. The project must be completed within 24 months of closing. Now, I talked to Steve Brock today, and the SRF does have a grant money as a bill with this Stormwater grant, so he's going to, he's already started the process of seeing how much grant money we can get. What that does is that buys down the grant, so that's a great thing. We need, pardon?
How much are we getting?
That's 1.5. Probably 1.5. Between the two, it's 200, it's 200.
What was all we, we guarantee to 1.5?
We guarantee to 1.5, yeah. And the other one, we had a meeting with them, and our score was so good that we should do it again.
That's one from July.
Uh-huh, yeah, that's one from July. Now, we, we have to select a bond counsel.
As part of State Revolving Fund's requirements, we have to have a separate bond counsel attorney who will review the transaction and offer an opinion to State Revolving Fund that the fund, or tax exempt, that the town's political subdivision eligible to receive these funds. That ultimately, if the debt is sold on a secondary market, this opinion would be relied upon by the purchaser of that. And it applies to the bond counsel, I kind of like this groundwork because explained by the details that you're having to survive. It is their opinion on which any of these investors may rely. And in large part, it's driven by whether there is this tax exempt status to indebtedness owed by political subdivisions. It won't take much time, bond counsel will use a template for their opinion that will be very much like what they give everybody else. But instead of being a component of indebtedness with the bond issuance, it's very expensive. I will say over the last decade or so, it has been reined in, and because of efforts on the part of responsible town councils across the state, bond councils have had to accept something less than what they used to in the good old days. But I got a quote from Lewis and Cappas, who has offered a range from 13,000 to 15,000, and then got a quote from Fager Baker Daniels for 12,000. And they're both reputable firms, I've worked with both of them at bond counsel before, there's not anything one has to offer that the other doesn't. That's not an insult, that's not really a compliment either, it's just the reality of it, I mean, they all know this terrain very well. My suggestion is we hire one that's going to cost us at least about $1,000. And so, it's a proposal from Scott Peck, Fager Baker Daniels as bond counsel with respect to our State Revolving Fund financing. He makes mention that they're sensitive to the limited budget in small towns like ours. He actually estimated that the council services would be in the range of 12,000, so he is committing to fix their fee at 12,000. And then, in both cases, if they have out of budget, we need to reimburse them for that, that he estimated they would not exceed $500,000, I don't think they would. Part of the reason fees are a little more reasonable in both cases is 5,000 we need for several meetings, I hope I don't have to be in need for them to do that, but I've done for my other clients that sort of shepherd this thing through and conducted those transactional functions that they might have, means that I'm going to be in attendance anyway. And so, my recommendation is you by motion, vote to retain Fager Baker Daniels as bond counsel for this project. We need to do this tonight because SRF is wanting to fill in that blank. It is a requirement, and I don't know that it's going to undermine our funding, but Dreamah, Dool and Weser has sensed some pressure to get this done, and so, there's no reason to postpone it. Any questions about that?
Pass those around if you like.
I did not make copies for everyone, I got, but these are the two proposals. Are they, they have a person from the bond counsel that came to all the meeting or anything? I recall that. What are they doing? What is, what is that?
You have to have.
Is it something else? What, what, what do they do? Hey, I know you definitely have, but we don't. That was right. That's really the short answer. There are pretty specific legal requirements that relate to the incurrence of indebtedness by political subdivisions, any of this thing across country. And particularly those that may turn out to be investments you, people sometimes invest in municipal bonds, right? And one of the reasons that municipal bonds as a form of investment are appealing is because the income earned on the interest term is tax exempt. It's tax exempt because the debt is owed by a government, by a political subdivision that doesn't pay taxes, I mean, you know, that doesn't make any sense for, for us to pay taxes when, I mean, we have to collect taxes in order to pay taxes, and so, the tax exempt. If the political subdivision, in this case, state town, has not complied with all of the requirements for that indebtedness, that could compromise and defeat the tax exempt treatment. So, someone who, and, you know, to think about someone buying $50 million of tax exempt bonds, and they get a return on, on that of 80%, and they're counting on it being tax exempt. And then they find out, well, it's not, you owe tax on this. They may have made a different investment, they may have invested that 50, adoption of place, they also got a better net return than they would have to pay tax on the return that municipal bonds paid. They're going to blame somebody for that, they're going to blame the bond counsel. If the bond counsel screws up that law firm, they're probably going to have to write a check. So, what bond counsel does is reviews the entire process to make sure that all of the, there is compliance that they were spent along the way, and ultimately, it reminds that, yeah, this is clean, and it will receive tax exempt status, and there's no reason to think that there will be any challenge to that, or that that status will change. And so, it doesn't take a lot of time, and it's not the first time they've done this, and fees relative to the amount of time they spend are ridiculous. I don't know whether they're getting paid 6,000 an hour, or they're getting paid 2,000 an hour, or whatever they're getting paid. But part of the reason that the fees are high is the liability that when attorneys are asked to express an opinion, at that point, you're placing yourself at risk if you were wrong. And so, because they're also taking on the liability by giving this opinion, it's a very high premium for those fees. The other reason is it's high because it can be. And probably that's the best answer. We can't do this, we can't take the next step through this process and get this very, very favorable financing if we don't have a bond counsel subpoena included as part of the package.
That comes out of the financing, though.
It does.
But we don't pay it.
That's right.
It comes out of the, it comes out of the way.
That's true.
Comes out of the way.
Where, the town of Morton County, are you going to get bonds in? And for our portion, or? No, this isn't a traditional sale of the bonds, but I think SRF will package, sometimes package, some of the indebtedness, and they may go to the secondary market with it. So, but in any case, I may not, I have much stronger opinions about all this than probably what I'm laying on, or laying on that I have very strong ones anyway. What I do for my clients is I shop around, and I try to drive this fee down as much as I possibly can. And it's phone calls, like, you know, appreciate where you're going to pass, and everything I'm going to get through, we're going to take the lowest one, and, you know, this work down in USA, you know, we're crashing around trying to find money every way we can, and, you know, and, and you try to get the lowest, yeah, and that's what I have here. Relative to this service being provided, private sector to this, this is a relatively low fee.
Now, I know.
And it's a good, and it's a good job, this contract's a good job.
Approval letter says Morton County's next step is to contact its financial advisor, which is Steve Brock, and its nationally recognized.
This is Lewis and Cappas.
So, which is.
That's Fager.
So, we can't, we can't go to the next step without a bond counsel.
I'm going to make a motion that we give the bond counsel counsel for $1,000. That would be Fager Baker Daniels as firm, Scott Peck as the attorney.
Do your second.
I'll say.
Okay, all those in favor say aye. All those saying aye. Okay.
And you.
Thank you. Now, can you send that information to Dreamah? Do you email that to her tomorrow?
Will.
Another thing on the SRF, Steve is working on is rolling our current loan into SRF, they don't want to be in a secondary position. They want to be a big dog primary. So, there's a possibility that that.
You need our bank loans? Yeah, that'd be good.
That would be great, that'd be great, because it would, it would certainly help them. And then, as soon as all of that's done, and we hear back from July 17th on Oprah loan, and Steve is starting his trade study, and after that, July 17th, Wesel will be here, it started on, working on bids. Okay, any questions on that one, on the Water Grant? Okay, I had an update on the Stormwater grant, Oprah is doing a special second round in September, so we are going to be, we, you can't have both, the Stormwater and the Water at the same time, you can't have Water and wastewater, but you can have Water and Stormwater. So, we'll be applying for that in September, it's another around a half million dollars or 700,000, half million dollars, so it's. And the planning grant, the PER, Culinary Engineering Authority, so just so you know, probably the next meeting, we'll, we'll probably all be here, oh, September, we'll see, yeah, September, July, yeah, we'll all be here next month.
I'd say too, that, you know, as elected town council members, you're very likely to go through this sort of thing one time, where you do huge capital projects like this. You know, a $2 million project in Morton County, that's a big project. But this is going exceedingly well, and not having gone through it and tried to figure out where to get money, and have to do it in a more conventional on issuance sort of a way, and pay market interest rates, is hard to have appreciation for how good this is. And part of the reason it is, and it's unfortunate that it worked like this, but councils in the past have not dealt with the problems you are, and have allowed the water to hit to the point where everyone, when they own the faucet, thinks they're poor and have to have a faucet instead of good, clear, clean, crystal water. And because it has gotten so bad, your scores are better. I mean, there's an urgency that translates to these funding agencies that move you up the list. But if you had tried to do this project without the grant and the low interest, long amortization funding that you're getting, you, I don't, I don't, I don't know that you could do it. I mean, I think you would be charging rates to residents here that, I don't have any idea what they'd be, I mentioned, we listen to $100,000 utility bills, and I think that would result in a lot of bills not being paid, and decision on whether or not to do it, or people deciding just to leave. And you're going to get this problem solved, and I'm telling you all that because you really ought to celebrate this, and everybody in town will celebrate it too. I think, you know, Steve Brock's done a good job, I think Weser's done a good job, but most importantly, it's all happening because you've decided to make it happen, and there are opportunities out there that you're tapping into, but you wouldn't be if you didn't take the initiative to go out and decide at some time to fix this and get it done, and it's going to be nice, I don't know how long it takes for folks to turn on the faucets, get water like that, and that's what's going to happen. So, I mean, it really is something that everybody ought to be excited about, because it's, it's not a common thing for you to get that once you get it. Right now, we're guaranteed today, and in July, we'll find out $500,000, and we can come, come back in September, whenever, like, another five, seven years.
That's the Stormwater, that would be.
But that's still.
Yeah, yeah, but you couldn't have paid in one year.
Lobby issue, just a pain?
Oh, no. The two, the million, the 550,000 and the 500,000 are taxed from very less free money, we don't have to pay that back, and then hopefully, Steve's working on getting the grant on the other.
Well, I mean, you're probably, you're probably, some of the attorneys that work, they have billable rates of $700 an hour. Any of that? I have probably just got.
Well, we're going to make the SRF, okay. Proceed with the next step, okay. Next step, we've been having on the agenda, approval of minutes, we have four minutes to approve, May 4th, May 11th, May 20th, State Wars, Public Affairs Council, these councils, but, anybody have any additions or questions on the four minutes? Have a name, Walter? Okay, approve this one. Sharon, your main financials? All right, he's going to place.
Four minutes.
Yeah, four minutes, yeah.
Four.
Okay, we'll look at the revenue report first.
I just want to say that under the lower operating from the town funding, we see January through May, and the storm there, and also the Lloyd stabilization, it was January through May. And then that was the first quarter of the franchise fee for the cable payment. And I think that was really the only thing extra.
I see we received $50 rest of 50 on pot water?
Yes, we did.
Oh, that's great. That was, I don't know what that balance is now.
I don't, I don't really know. I don't know where the paper would work that has the balance.
It's in that, it's in that file cabinet, the one that's going this way.
I found the folder on the end that I didn't, I'll see if I can.
But I'm sure it's. They can state them, let you know.
Yeah, but it just.
I'm out of the blue.
It has to do with the work. Okay, and then, oh, do you have any more in question?
Any questions on the revenue report?
Okay, and then the appropriation report.
Now, this here, they pay any of the bond bill insurance for you?
No, no, it doesn't.
Only you, all of them are in the appropriation. Questions on the appropriation report?
Okay, okay, and then the front, front of report.
I did bring last year's of this.
Yeah, I did too. I wanted to comment, Mr. Valley, you have noticed in your MPA, you have 75.6 this year versus 44.3 last year, so you've, you've been able to save money there. Water balance, 601,000 versus 88,000, and that's good too. Wastewater, it's 77.8 versus 65, we had some huge expenses at the beginning, so, and this includes the 33,000 purchase on the property. All right, this includes the 33,000 dollar purchase on property?
Yes, the property and the automatic.
Okay, take on, any questions on payroll? Take on, motion to approve?
Motion to approve, take on.
Okay, all those in favor say aye. All those saying aye. Okay, council claims report, any question on claims report?
Is it okay to take that bomb cap out of the major?
That's what you say, has to be done, has to be done.
Well, it can come out of, it could come out.
Oh, I mean, according to what you said to. I didn't realize that it was used that much, I thought it was mostly for utilities. If you say it's used that much, I'm sure it is, it is. Okay, so, okay, the claims, question to approve, claims? Okay, it is, it's a second. All those in favor say aye. All those saying aye, any claims to approve? We don't have any wastewater, that's on you. Okay, one thing that I have, I had on the last one, like, about, there were times when part timers, Becky and Swank both need a few extra hours, and I'll give you a reference, like, the night of the shooting, my team over, and as he should, all officers should be there for that. So, and then Becky, there were times when she has, this week she has, next week she has planning and zoning, and this week with council, also this first month when she's heavily on payments, so there are just a couple of times that these guys have, you know, a couple of extra hours, and I need to know what you guys. I think it's. Yeah, it's easy to compensate, but what do you want to give them, like, a two, two, three, four hour leeway, I mean, if there is something that comes up?
What's for, what's fine, what, how much do you question to give them? It, it wouldn't be every week.
No, no, maybe you're one of them.
Four hours, just four hours, I'm putting, I'm not there, there will be times, that's not only generally, but four hours a week, or it's.
Well, just four hours when there's an emergency, like, if I had to shoot, and they're called out like that, and they have to come.
Under special, we can say four hours.
So, on that week, rather than 20 hours, maybe 24, if there's a, you know, something like that, because those things happen. And when we do have that kind of, 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 everybody needs to be, all have to, need to be on hands.
How much are you, Becky, how much are you, you look at the plan zone more, that's why, a couple hours there. Then what else do you have?
This one? Well, like, the days bills are, do, are generally going out early because people are lying back, and then when I'm going, you walk to.
13, 14.
You think four hours, you know?
Oh, I think that's, yeah.
You should turn it on then.
So, do you think if, that if we gave them, just on special circumstances, before they could have up to four hours, is somebody willing to?
Part of my help can have a little bit, four hours, special. Yeah, yeah, kind of.
Uh, no, but.
I just want to make sure when we look back at this, in a year or something, we remember what we're doing. We're talking about four hours within what timeframe? Is that four hours a week, four hours a month?
Well, just be that week, it would just be, I mean, like, this week, she would probably have two, because this.
So, that during any. During any pay period, you're just saying they're authorized to work up to an additional four hours?
Yeah, there are circumstances.
Yes.
I mean, not just because, you know, if they're.
But then, what will they actually be paid, the number of hours they work up to for? In, in increments of what, I mean, are they keep track of their time? If they exceed their normal work week? I mean, if, if you only work two hours, then you would never, you're never going to pay Becky for four, right?
No.
So, you need to keep track of your time, and then, and we're going to break it, you know, what constituted it, if it's 45 minutes, if it's a half an hour, do we, do we divide it in increments of a quarter of an hour, or?
It could be just like the time, just like what she said with Walter, I mean, that's just, that's a short time.
Well, but if it's an hour and 15 minutes, what are we going over with?
Hour and 15 minutes.
Hour and 15 minutes, okay. Yeah, okay, wouldn't it be easier, like, you're talking about the meetings, the planning and zoning, this, wouldn't it be easier just to say, okay, they give an hour amount for coming to the meeting? Can't, can't very well do that. Not with an hourly employer, because.
Just paying the regular rate?
That's okay, except, I just heard of this in the past, with, with somebody that does it, where 45 minutes, or 50 minutes, the more detail, the better. So, do we round that to increments of 15 minutes to the nearest, round it up to the nearest quarter hour? You see what I mean? So that, you know, I, I worked, I was out 90 minutes, and what am I paid for? I paid for an hour, I paid for two hours, I paid for 90 minutes, I paid for 87 minutes. I paid for an hour, I paid for two hours, I paid for ninety minutes, I paid for eighty-seven minutes. I, I think we need to say, if you round it up to, uh, the closest quarter of an hour, so that they know how to write it down.
What if those hours are just approved with the next council?
What?
Well, that's fine, but they still need to report them to you.
Because I might spoil if you had two or three shootings here in town.
One, one way of an hour problem we have with that is, is there is an entitlement to be paid within ten days after the closing of the pay period. And so if we wait until the end of the month, we're not actually paying them as timely as what, as what state law requires. I think it's fine to do what you're proposing.
I see what you're saying. You just are saying that it's actual time worked and not.
Well, that's it, we just need to know how to calculate it, I guess, is what I'm saying. So then we, we would say during any pay period, both Becky and Officer Slane are authorized to work up to an additional four hours as the, as their work requires, right?
She never knew that. It should never be, of a ready.
But if you also work more than four, you're not in trouble, right? And you're to keep track of that time work over and above your normal, uh, number of hours worked, twenty or whatever that is. And to keep track of it in increments of a quarter of an hour. And reported and paid accordingly, at the same hourly rate as what is approved in the salary.
But their normal work rate would still remain twenty, or remain twenty and thirty, but it would still remain that. But it would just be those couple of times, or for an emergency. Because I know the night of the shooting, and that, Swank's week was taken all the time. Yeah, we, we lost some valuable time.
Is he a comp time?
I don't think so, they don't give comp time, do they?
Well, they could.
Part time, do you have comp time?
Well, I mean, that would be a matter of whether you wanted to treat it that way instead of paying. Right now, they don't, no.
I didn't know part time was considered a comp time.
Well, I think that would be just a policy. Now, I suppose you could say if they work more than whatever their schedules were, they would receive that back and pay them time off as opposed to nothing. But we're kind of working against ourselves again, anytime we do that, because then we're saying to Becky, you work three hours sessions, we work three hours less next week. We can't afford for her to work three hours less next week because she's already due it. So I don't know that that's the solution. So, sorry.
No, because your motion is to work up to four hours.
I'm telling you, these issues will come up if we don't discuss them.
And fifteen, and your motion is to work up to four hours additional in case of, have to, of conflicting in. So, okay?
That's great.
Okay, and there was a second.
Yes, I see.
Okay, so all the work, if there's a on?
Aye.
Oh, same sign? Okay. Now, CPW, we started. And Chairman, our loan payers, I see they made a loan structure done, and there's a note on there for sixty-five thousand. And a note on, a note on there for what the utilities and closing costs. It's in the packet. On the breakdown. Now, that's it, I got sixty-five thousand, we can play the big part of the loan structure.
Yeah, and on that, since, uh, I couldn't get on the gym today, for Dale. But what, as far as I know, what we're waiting on is BL Anderson. And SSI is supposed to be coordinated with BL Anderson and Dale Hutter. So that we can get the new monitoring system for the insurance service there. So that's the sort of, that is what we have to hold for the project. Well, they've got their machine out there, we can be able to send blocks by ourselves. They're very cool with the machine.
Probably have a nice white jacket, except for, what can you do with your machine?
Well, you are looking to do that. That's what we have to do. So that was, yes.
Oh, you have a sewing machine. Oh, wow. Good one.
The CBX is in. We've got a call into Covalent for. The city looking account of that Steve Harrison looking account, helps with the initial application. At the start of this first application, we've got a flood reduction. Were those?
These are the two Covalents.
Right.
Yeah. I had an email from Covalent, and they changed billing people. And their billing is fine, so this is for, ended last year and this, this year. Oh, no, I take that first and second quarters of this year. The month, quarter, we're going for the monthly monitoring, and that's on the.
The, yes. Okay, the question on those is that, which if you would go through, I would request that you group, wait till I do a little bit of checking before murders. Say that we can, go ahead and send a check, whatever, I do want to check, but I do have a question about their monthly monitoring program.
Are they not sending you a report or anything?
No.
Oh.
So how they interpret it.
Yeah.
Reinterpreted. Is it happening? Are they working and everything? No, are they monitoring? I don't, uh, if they come down, they'll tell us. That's where I want to. That was, that was kind of important in consideration.
You know, the thing is, is.
Now, they come, I mean, if that problem, I know we're in, but they're, they're right down there, but okay. It's hard just voluntarily, like a, you know, PM, permanent maintenance issue, that's not.
So which one that monitor, is it Jason or is it?
It's Jason. Same.
Okay. I think you're right, I didn't realize that, I thought you were probably getting monthly.
No.
I would have been better for both of them.
Well, maybe it's different, yeah.
I would have thought.
It's been this long, so, well, it was a lot, I didn't under the total cost of the cost plan. Well, we want the information, just says how it's working.
Okay, well, who'll email her? Okay, which?
Eventually, sooner than later, we'll have to have power back to, far back to the later. The price is probably not about a thousand dollars, they've reported it at one thousand, two hundred dollars for a power back there. It's not for the effort, but I just want to give everybody heads up and start thinking about that. What we'll do with that. I think we have enough, as far as I know, because Hover Electric didn't give us any issues. In fact, we got newer monitors coming, so obviously they were, so we're going to be okay with it, just the power we got now. For that. That being said, the only other thing, and we're pushing around, is running the E torque pump. But, I mean, it has been working, everything has been working so far, so it's not immediately that we need to do, but. We do need to keep this mind clear on that, that it's a, a service back there. And it's going to have to come around. Hover Electric, around Hover Electric and pump road, if, you know, tie onto the, for they go around, because I've got to check, you told me, I have to check. These, and all that, so. That's what's going to have to come across.
And then they all want people that can do it, right?
Yes.
Plus.
Yes, and all that. No. At least having the other specification, of course, it was on with their wire, they're wanting to follow us. But once, once it's done, in ten years from now, it's still, they're right. Once we run it back there, the people, the sellers and board and down the road, it should kind of, that's where they're at. No, I'm on it, it's, yeah, I'm looking at it, not tomorrow.
We need to do it, because it's only, things out there are only going to increase. Your sense that we can't add, just something we're talking about possibly, you know, second, number four, moving it over there.
On the works of, 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 yeah. No, we can do that now. I mean, that's not feasible or possible.
Maybe you guys been out for a while. Could you, could you believe it? I can't believe, the, maybe I'll block it then. Cattails are gone, you can see clear, flat out, I mean, they're not, they're not like they are. They're clear water, the water's clear, unbelievable. Okay. What else you got?
Uh. Just we've been doing, uh, industry signs, again, I just got, I mean, I've got a priority, just that you guys are working on, to go through it, to see where I'm, you know, what I'm working on. I think, you know, the company's doing that. Case in point, two and a half, three yard job, which is a sorcerer in the church now. That was a street looking picture, but your bar, Martin, has turned into another day's job, because we're waiting on, we have some more hype. Just to say the guy was, because when we got into it, it wasn't enough. It's going to take a little bit more to, you know, see if they.
But you have what you need for the signs up, all you need to do is call and locate for half a dozen of them, if you have time, a couple hours one day, you can fill a couple up. You've got a driver, I mean, locate, no, you call me the six locators, it'll take us a few minutes, and then for two weeks, if you had some time, you can fill up your signs. If you have a driver, you just, yeah.
What, on this, on this storm, you're talking about Yex's house?
Uh-huh.
That, is it the same thing that's happened to all of these, I mean, where they're just, at a certain age where they're sinking? Because that's the same thing that happened on Mulberry, right? Are they all the same problem?
Well, yeah, basically, we, we had to take it back another foot, to be able to get halfway these lines, you can still go down the line, and it's still cracked, so. I mean, eventually you're going to have to say, well, it is about that. But I mean, that's a key location, because a lot of people in school traffic and all that, uses that location, there's school like, but it catches a lot of it. And then the, the locates are COVID, or, or the place that they're part of, again, heart and church, so that, you know, that's, that's also critical. Also, Vinnie Street Church, Almar, uh, Church and Park. Well, and, and no, no one's blind us. I, which I don't want to be the chair, you, to see what kind of money we've got, so I have, pay me money this year, I've got two, three streets in question. And.
Where the street is, eighteen-nine, and it. Oh, it gets something in general, and we put some in the Covalent, but, yeah. See what you need.
Uh, and, which I, already, I just want to make sure that we get back to it, because some places. I want to have, uh, fluid services come back in. Cut out some more wastewater lines, we have a problem there. Manhole is, uh, made for, made for, for. There's a, well, you got to dig it up and get access to it. There is a manhole there, but there is no manhole, there isn't, in that easement, there's a manhole somewhere in there. That's how far it goes for the next manhole. I think it's just like that, it's going to keep us, because everybody's running, running to cut it that far down.
Have, have that camera, make sure that there's not.
Well, ever, you'd be okay if you could get a camera, I'll, I'll be right, where you went, it's that far, maybe there is a manhole there. It's just not on that, I know that, but you're right, I've never, really, just not. I, the cost of the camera, I don't know. But second, we can probably get them for a day. I guess we said that, again, we got a same issue at, uh, the one, who runs behind the, the houses, that, uh, Montel and Washington, those houses, but, yeah, you can hear the line, or the line curse, you have to do that for the government. At the very east end of that, there is no one. Whoa, so that'd be another, you're out of the camera, or just clear down the, your, your, your memories, clear down there. Almost the, well, building across the street from home, so.
You all answered. You got one?
I don't know, that, that is, we've done a lot of things.
I'll just have a, for you. That's your report, yeah.
Call a call last month, thirty-nine, except for thirty-four the previous, County six, six, five stores. Like I said, I started listening to top five call types, we had five alarms, five medical runs, four domestics, four welfare checks, and two systems issued at the top line. Rest of them are just titles on the two. Call citations were seven, eleven ordinance violations, that includes the two thousand four issue, five state statute, and eighteen warrants issued. Uh, number three, I want to get council approval to attend training tomorrow, uh, in Marion County, it's, uh, it wasn't something I looked up, they called me and wanted me to attend it due to the number of emergencies we've had here, all crossings. It's Indiana railroad is pretty gone, there's only going to be twenty of us, Marion County, and few, Austin County, and my suburbs, and Long Island. Um, it's, it's pretty much all day, it's nine thirty to three, and tomorrow, so I need council approval to attend that, and it's free.
My motion, you want to attend training?
I'll say. All those, please say on? Or the same sign? Okay, there you go.
Uh, moving on, number four, um, I want to see what you guys want to do with the two thousand four power, you know, put that up for sale, uh, every night, once a month, I try and get that right, but I've had to move it several times, even though they requested to, well, we're asked. You guys want to try and put that back up for selling, and. I have to kind of balance out the money, it's a bit, it's a bit sad, it kind of picks it up a little bit.
Is that one of the, you have the fourth one, yeah?
Yeah, the fourth one, we got back.
Oh, yeah, what's up with that? Sitting there.
So, so.
How are we doing?
I don't want to, it's less than.
My motion, other?
Well.
I'll say. Discussion, and writing in my head, what is it, you don't think it was sold for a thousand, or less than thousand?
I think, you think over now, we have to, we have to take bids on it. I, I mean, it's, it's right there, I mean, a little bit more than that, so. I would say somewhere between eight.
It's got coming in at seven seventy, or?
So that, that is, that is.
Now, let's take, say, that, for. How's that? Okay, there's motion on the, uh, on four to take sealed bids for two thousand four power, going, I'll, I'll, say on.
Aye.
Oh, same sign? Okay, if you guys have some trouble with your reserve car?
Yeah, the O seven, I need to get council approval to, I had to already get the old sensor replaced today, and the actuator went out, the actuator is what controls, uh, inside the dash, it pushes it back and forth, the pressure regulator, it goes, there's several of them, and one of them out was, was, was circulating. That one out, I got that fixed this morning, because sometimes it don't shut off, and it's bad, it's really bad. I would hang, I got that fixed this morning. Um, there's a problem with the AC, David thinks, he found it leaking on the lines, he charged it and tried for a month. I talked to him today, he gave me four on the AC, and it was, uh. It was two hundred and fifty dollars to replace the, the line on that. I'm not concerned with that right now, what I would like to do, um. Stress been, I think you're talking a long time now, stress on the car. What if you're going to get quotes on the stress at seven forty? I went back to him today, because I got a quote, uh, seven forty includes OE and shock stress. But I asked him if he want, uh, a car class, because I can give him, oh, what, sixty dollars cheaper than his quote, but he said at that time, he said, well, I'll, I'll just make a deal on the OE on it. So he didn't give me a set price on it, he's going to make a deal. So he didn't give me a set price on it, he's going to have to deal on using stock, uh, stress and shocks. So what I would need approval for is to go get the shocks and stress replaced. Um, I've got to focus that before it would be quite bad, even if that's a deal on, on parts.
How many months is that one now?
That one's got, uh, so it was a hundred and, anytime fifty one thousand.
So the house in the hall, the, the, there and then?
Yeah, there's one, yeah, yeah, I was going to say that. Yeah, very tense. There's some all these lines. Seems to be the same line, always with, uh, in college, it's a good place to be.
I'll make a motion that I spent up to a thousand dollars getting it, work on it, go sell.
Second.
Second.
Okay, discussion, all those who can say aye, uh, go send some. Okay, well, that's down, you know, during the other car. Uh, I would too, Marvin, and I'm showing your mileage, one five oh seven six four.
One five oh seven six four?
Uh, on the car.
Yeah. Okay, next up, uh, which is on your leg, so, Sharon, did we ever hear anything back on the panel this time? Uh, table again?
No, no, not yet. But I think that we might get the money when we get our James gone. See, we'll be getting our large tax, our reject money and some other money this month, in June. And I, we completed the survey and sent it in, and we completed it, but we haven't heard back yet whether or not.
What makes you think, uh, uh, you're back on again? You, you feel like?
Well, because we.
That's been a while away.
Yes, but you could call him, or I, I can call him, but I just feel like they're, you know, we're going to be getting a large sum of money.
You are, but, but the sources of those findings are entirely different. It may be coincidental.
Well, it comes from the same, well, yes, I think you're saying.
Yeah, I mean, they, these really are court fees that have been collected and then are shared because you can write tickets there. Which is really the county, your state settlement is from the state through the county. But they're not going to coordinate those together, it would be coincidental. Uh, yeah, I, I know you have more cards at this, you both have here and a half. But I think, well, I mean, you should have had it a long time ago. My theory is that with passing the time, the likelihood is less and less, so I'd vote all you can. Well, you can, so it's just considered enough.
I thought we sent that, so.
Well, I don't know, whether you collect it three years past or not. Yeah, we would, I, we've got all of it. I know you have, but I don't know whether if you miss a cycle for one year, would you go back and collect it?
Yeah, and I say that just because the first time we got it, it was, uh, from Jason Allen. He said, uh, he had to build up over here so much, we get sixty thousand dollars.
Okay, well, that's great, all, yeah, so it's ready now, all right?
Um, okay, Nationality Allen, you remember when I brought that up? Uh, I thought it's something we'd like to do that night, we're going to do, I am going to do a tape demonstration. So I need two volunteers, and the other's one.
It's kidding.
Mark, four.
Joe.
I'm, I'm kidding. No, I'm going to do that, but I'm like, that's the, that's all.
Gosh.
I thought that's.
I don't, that's all. Uh, just, I know, it's not time to tell stories and all that stuff. No kidding, Princess Lakes, vultures came in one night with the pages were new. And they just got approval and did that, and somebody volunteered, I don't know. I think I'm writing the bill of commerce, you're writing that. It's the craziest thing I've ever seen. They work. They're wonderful, but I thought, ooh, how do you talk somebody into that?
Talk them into that?
The, what I'm going to look for is people that, like, I, like. Are you serious about that? Oh, I'm joking, I mean, I'm joking.
Great for people that, uh, you get to see it.
Well, wait, I, I, I would take a shot. I may have just worked up a dementia later.
I think I can figure out how to use it, you would have helped me.
It is, it's a sign of control. Oh, yeah. It works. I guess.
Okay, nuisance ordinance.
I have, uh, a pass out here, I have, I'm going to pass out. They've had to send it around. At the last meeting, we reviewed the nuisance ordinance, I think you got the meeting before, and you wanted a few changes made. And what I'm passing around is that order, we would have to change, I believe.
We want to clear this line, one line.
We want it, oh, yeah. Uh, section three, the first change was, uh, we get page two under section three A. The old one had, had excluded snow or ice remaining on public sidewalks, containers for twenty-four hours, and wanted that removed. It's gone. Uh, we talked about inserting someplace along the way, sort of a rodent's burrowing kind of a provision. And so I inserted it under what you'll see in your draft now as E, section three D. Maintaining premises in a manner that creates an sanitary condition, like to attract or harbor mosquitoes, rodents, vermin, and these carrying pests. Then, uh, O, three O, the language is a little awkward. And what we had before was the outside parking and storage on resident, on residential zone property. Large numbers of vehicles, uh, materials, supplies, or equipment not customarily used for residential purposes and violation of requirements set forth below. And I changed that to the outside parking and or storage on residential zone property of vehicle parks. Building materials, appliances, equipment, or other objects not customarily used for residential purposes. Because I think our abandoned vehicle, or what it is, takes care of the vehicles, a whole vehicle, you know? And so we don't need to have another park where we can somehow consider as a nuisance, the parking cars on private property. I mean, I don't think we need for it to read that way. So I fixed it, so, uh, it doesn't get interpreted that way, it seems, in my mind, a bit silly. And, uh, then section eight, uh, reads that a property owner may appeal violation notes for a bill within ten days of a, every C. By filing a writ notice of appeal and request for a hearing at the next regular meeting. The draft before this, this required within that writ notice of appeal, they state the basis of the appeal. And I remember suggesting last, I mean, why would we, they don't need to do that. And that's the reason they're asking for a hearing in the first place. I mean, if someone wants to appeal it, I think they ought to get to appeal it when they show up at the hearing. They can make an argument for why they're appealing it, why they think they ought to do change, but I don't think they included writing what their basis for it is. So I've just taken that out and it reads the same other lines. So I, I believe I made the changes you wanted me to make. And, you know, those are, I just pointed them out to you, so if you're so inclined, this would be two thousand fifteen dash four on first reading this first day of June.
Okay, have our first reading tonight, and a second reading next time, is that okay with you? I think you talk to the other, again, we'll, 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 we'll. It's your motion to adopt ordinance two thousand fifteen dash four on first reading.
Make a motion for the dot two thousand fifteen dash four first reading.
Okay, so second, second, okay, thank you. Uh, discussion, we pretty much viewed it once, all those who can say aye, go send some. Okay. Uh, two batteries, by chance, bring the burn ordinance, you might bring a burn ordinance. Well, we'll, we'll have that in the, uh, in the, that makes me, I'll hand it to the copy. This was a talent, a founder has a burn ordinance, coincides with the state burn ordinance, but it does ban open burning, uh, especially, uh, I got some, the lights at night.
Well, and I, I would have said that to you too, but there is state legislation forbidding this, that, or any case. We have a lot of, a couple of jurisdictions have their ordinances, but something has changed. You know, it used to be if a local ordinance wanted to ban outdoor burning, it could. But there wasn't this overriding state prohibition against it, and there really is. So even if you did adopt the ordinance, that there, there could be a violation for burning now. So.
I have, uh, under, since the property of West Washington Street, our initial offer was that, was not settled. And, uh, Mr. Rowe would like, uh, council approval to negotiate a property. And that was, so we're still wanting to do. You not, I do not have any. I mean, there's a, a. So, is it motion?
I'm making a motion for Rowe to go with the street.
On West Washington?
West Washington.
Okay, so second? Okay, uh, all those who can, your discussion, all those who can say aye?
Aye.
Okay, uh, I have another, under new business, uh, the records upstairs in Town Hall, records in that, uh, room or a mess. Uh, jam check for Felida, and I can have CC workers one day, we have some dates, right?
Yes.
Some weeks, maybe two, but, uh, to help organize that. So I would like the council approval to, uh, have an additional, one, possibly two CC workers on a Monday to, uh, clean up and organize the public records. There are things in there that really, uh, could be thrown away. There are old town, uh, newspaper articles or flyers and things like that in the library to have. So they'd just be sorted through again.
They just, you know, I don't have a list ahead, but they just, they need to revise in a way that our retention.
Oh, yeah, sure, they have their retention.
So you need, they have that.
And some of it can go, I.
Oh, I'm not sure I've had that, I'm sure, but some of it really can't. Well, I don't know, that, that can, we just need to make sure we said.
Yeah, and it'd be nice if we could help you on that. So, if that's okay with you guys, I'm going to start the project. Okay. And, uh, final thing that I have is, uh, I would like to have approval from the council to proceed to apply for an eighty thousand dollar grant, uh, up to eighty thousand dollars. And I'll have more details the next meeting that I want approval before I start, for all my time in, uh, a grant for a town website. So if I want to mention, motion, you don't let me start that work, because I don't want to do it.
Be nice to him.
Huh?
Be nice to him.
Oh, that's what we have to do. It's a nice. Okay, well, I'm going to proceed with that, but it's okay with you guys. Uh, public comments, any public comments? Motion to adjourn, will you? Is that kind of anywhere? You need to adjourn? I'm trying to get, hey, bro, five, I've got, I've got everything down today, cheers.